Alright, I'm gonna call the tax rate hearing to order. Rick, if you'd like to get us started?
Thank you. This presentation is regarding the tax rates and the tax rate process for the Wentzville School District. As we get started, I'd like to just inform you what this process is and what this hearing is. As you can see on the screen, the district receives notice of final assessed valuation from the county in late August, and this is after the Board of Equalization. The district calculates the tax rates per the state auditor's guidelines. That means the district is only allowed to determine tax rates as approved by the state auditor's office. Once we do that calculation per the state auditor's office, we give that calculation to the state auditor. That state auditor, if they agree that our rates are correct, they send a note back to us called a pro forma rate that says, yes, we agree with your rates and those are within voter-approved levies. Only at that time do we post a tax rate hearing notice, which was the notice that was set over a week ago to inform people of this hearing. The next bullet you'll see is that we have the tax rate hearing. This is allowing public comment as required by law. The school board then approves or disapproves whatever is said in this hearing. The school board, this is a subject on their agenda in the meeting immediately following this hearing. The school board at that time will set the levy and rate for the year. Once the levy and rate is approved by this board, the district will submit the rate to the county, and that's due by October 1st. Then the county submits the rate to the state auditor for certification. If the state auditor agrees that that is what they had originally approved, then we will receive a certification from the state auditor and those will be our rates for the year. So that is the process that we're going through, and that is where this tax rate hearing fits into that total process. The general use of funds of these taxes is to support educational programs and goals, provide services to the district, and to pay debt on facilities. Now that's done through four particular funds. Matter of fact, it's done through these four funds. Different rates and different assessments go to different funds. That is why there are so many rates in this tax presentation. We have the general fund, which is incidental or general items. There are non-certified staff and benefits, supplies, support services, and general district operations. Anything in this fund one and any taxes you see that relates to the general fund can be used for these items or any other item in the district. Teachers' fund can only be used for certified staff salaries and benefits and contracted education. The debt service fund, which will be discussed in this in this hearing, will be for principal and interest payments on bonded debt and can only be used for those purposes. The capital fund levy can only be used for construction, improvements on equipment, new equipment, and lease purchase payments. And you will see the various levies during this presentation. The taxes that the people in this district pay are based on two things. Two major things, based on hundreds of things actually, but the two major items that taxes are based on are assessed valuation and the rate. We'll discuss the assessed valuation first. The assessed valuation in 2021 for this district was $2.6 billion, as noted on the screen. In 2022, it goes right between 2.7 and 2.8 billion dollars. It's an increase of $170.8 million from last September, and real estate new construction is $67 million of that increase. This next screen will tell you what is happening with assessed values. Now, you'll notice from 16 to 22 that there's a rate change every year, but you'll notice that on this screen you'll see dark lines and light lines. The dark lines represent non-reassessment years, and the light lines reflect reassessment years. Now you'll notice that in the in the non-reassessment years, the rates go from 5.82% increase to 4.15% increase to 5.26% increase. So our budget this year naturally was not 6.62%. You can see the trend that we're going by in unreassessment years. Therefore, we are having assessment value higher than we budgeted in our annual budget. You will notice in reassessment years, we got 12.9%, 10.3%, and 11.1%. Those are the years that when the reassessed valuation comes in, that we get most of our tax money in those years and most of our reassessed values come in in those years. One thing to note here is that since this is not a reassessment year, and if your property taxes were not reassessed and you didn't buy a new car, and we're not increasing the rates, your taxes do not go up this year for our school districts. For the Wentzville School District, to be in particular. The proposed rates that we're proposing to this board, and this board will vote on these in the meeting, in the board meeting following this hearing, are as follows: the general fund, 2.3615; teachers' fund, $1.15.56100; debt service fund, 93 cents and 4100s; capital projects fund, 59 cents and 53100s, for a total levy of $5.04. I will now discuss each of the individual levies. The first is the operating funds levy. That consists of generals, teachers, and one capital fund that is not restricted. The state's allowable rate is $3.66, and we are recommending $3.66. We are only recommending, and we are recommending, the state-authorized rate. We're not voluntarily forfeiting any part of our operating levy, but by accepting the state's authorized rate, there will be a 12 one-hundredths of one penny, that's 12 one-hundredths of one penny, on a $200,000 assessed value, that's $2.40. This is an adjustment to the rate by the state auditor's office based on current tax laws. There is no tax increase in this in this rate adjustment for the state auditor's office. One thing we have to remember as we go through this hearing, tax increases must be approved by the voters. This district and this board has no right to approve a tax increase. That can only be done by the voters. This is a state-authorized adjustment to the taxes per state law. We have a temporary levy. It's called Prop 3 levy. This is a capital levy. There is no change to this levy from the prior year. We also have a Prop E levy. This is not related to the bond Prop E. This is a Prop E for capital. That levy was passed. It's a temporary levy also. There is no change in the Prop E rate from the prior year. The next levy is the debt service fund. The debt service funds are not restricted by the Hancock Amendment, but the state auditor's office is allowing us, per state law, to increase our levy by 10 cents. We are not accepting this tax rate levy that we are allowed to increase, and we are keeping, I am recommending, I can't say we are keeping this up to the board. I am recommending to the board that we not accept this rate increase allowable by the state for several reasons. The main reason is that we promised the people in this district that our bonds would be a no-tax-increase bond. What that means is we promised them that we would not raise taxes based on these bonds and that taxes in the future would not be raised on these bonds. So we are forfeiting 10-cent levy in this area. All other levies, we are accepting that the levies that the state has recommended. We are not recommending that we accept this 10-cent allowable tax rate for the debt service fund. This is a history of our tax levies from 2017 to our proposed rate in 2022. Notice the reassessment years, the variance is at the bottom on the total levies. In reassessment years, we reduce our rates by over 20 cents. We reduce our rates by over 20 cents. We have no choice because the same adjustment that's allowing us 12 one-hundredths of one penny this year are the state laws that require us to reduce our levies by over 20 cents in our reassessment years. What this means is your tax rates aren't really changing, excuse me, your tax totals are not really changing, but because the taxes, because the inflation rate is so much higher than is allowed to go up per the Hancock Amendment, we are, let me back up. When the reassessed values go up higher than inflation, we are not allowed to accept that extra money because we are only allowed to increase taxes up to the amount of inflation. Because we can only accept increases up to the amount of inflation, when inflation goes extremely high and reassessed rates go extremely high, we have to reduce the tax rate itself so that the amount of money we receive is no higher than the rate of inflation. That's called the Hancock Amendment. That, along with other laws, are the same reason that we reduce taxes by over 20 cents in reassessment years, and we increase taxes by a very minor percentage of these adjustments in non-reassessment years. Our rates compared to other, our operating rates compared to other districts in this county. You can see that Wentzville operating rates are in the middle of the five districts in this county. You can see St. Charles City has the highest 1922 rate, and you can see that Francis Howell has the lowest rate. What I have in the far right-hand column is the amount of change in rates for each school district. You'll notice that all but St. Charles City, our rates are relatively very small, are within a penny or hundredths of a cent. You'll notice that St. Charles City went up 55 cents in their operating rates. The next screen will show our debt service rates. What you're gonna see here is that St. Charles City went down 55 cents in their debt service rates to offset the 55 cents in their operating rates. So basically, most districts do as we do. They say, hey, when we have debt service, we're not going to tax the districts for additional debt service. And what they do is they implement no-tax bond increases. So you will notice that on the debt service items here, that none of the districts, including us, are accepting the increases, and these are generally large increases of a dime or more, are not accepting these increases. St. Charles City, of course, had the voters approve a change from the debt service rates to the operating rates. In summary, on all rates combined, oh, by the way, one other thing I want to mention is that you'll notice that Wentzville has the highest debt service levy of all of the districts. The reason we have the highest debt service levy, the debt service levy is what you use to build buildings. We build buildings more than anyone else in this county. We've been building a building, a building, building, a building, yes, we've been doing that. We've been building a building every year for very many years. And it's because of that that the levy on our debt service has to be higher than the levies of debt service of the other districts. But when you look at the combined levies, we're still not the highest levy. Even despite having all the building we're doing, we are only second highest in the combined rates. Now, when you take the assessed values and you multiply those by the levies, you get projected revenue. The estimated tax revenue is $138.2 million is our expected tax revenue from the assessed values and the rates that I'm presenting tonight. This is $9 million higher than last year's state auditor's office-approved assessed values and rates. This is $3.5 million higher than our 2022-23 budget. Due to the difference between, and this difference is not due to the to the rate increase that is allowed per the state by how state taxes are calculated. This is due to the change in the assessed values of $170 million. Property taxes are budgeted at 48.8% of the total district revenues. The slide I'm going to show you now is a slide that I have added to the deck. It was requested that we supply this information. This is the total revenues that we're getting from our taxes and assessed values, our rates and assessed values, compared to everybody else in the district. Now, you notice Wentzville is right in the middle on our estimated revenues for assessed values. Here's the quirk about this screen. You'll notice that Francis Howell, who has the lowest rate, has the highest revenues. You'll notice Orchard Farm, who has the highest tax rate, has the lowest revenues. Notice, we are in the middle with our total estimated revenues in the middle despite the fact of our increasing size of the district. Where do our funds go and what happens if we don't accept these levies? Our budget is based on accepting the taxes in this particular hearing. This is where our money goes. You notice the blue piece of the pie and the red piece of pie are salaries and benefits. 84-plus percent, 84 and a fraction percent of all of our operating budget goes to salaries and benefits, and that's mostly teachers. You can look at everything else that makes up these dollars, and that is two slivers of this pie, and that is purchased services and supplies. Purchased services, the other 7% of this pie, includes tuition and transportation for all of our sped students. It includes all property services, which is waste disposal, lawn services, grass cutting, mold testing, asbestos testing, pest control, HVAC services, third-party repairs, painting, maintenance. Professional services include special ads, copiers, services for our architects, alarm services. It includes all of our legal fees, all of our audit services, all of our technical services and third-party services, including all of our assist services for our software, and it includes all of our insurance payments, which is over a million dollars a year. So this 7% includes all those items. The last 9% includes supplies. 54% of that 9% includes utilities, computers for our kids, and food for our kids. 54% of that 9% is those three items. The rest of that, the other 46% of that 9% covers furniture and fixtures, small equipment, band instruments, music supplies, sports equipment, sports supplies, uniforms, classrooms, instructional supplies, camp supplies. It includes student activities, all health service supplies and everything that's used in the nurses' offices, evaluations, tests, departmental supplies, all of our chemicals, all of our waxes, all of our paper products, and 100 other items. Basically, what I'm saying is, this is where our dollars go on our operating funds. There is not a whole lot of operating funds left over, and this is where they are budgeted to go through this tax hearing. Any adjustments to this tax hearing will affect the items in this pie chart. By the way, a couple of other things I want to mention is that the taxes are not going up. Taxes can only go up by approval of the voters. This board and no one here tonight has the authority to increase taxes. If anyone here is coming up to say, "Don't increase taxes", we don't have that ability and this board does not have that ability. The other thing I want to say is that independent third-party auditors, if you're wondering how good we handle our funds, third-party auditors consistently acknowledge our proper handling and recording of district funds, and we have never got anything other than a stellar recommendation from any third-party auditor, including last year's audit that we've received. The other thing is, we have a balanced budget. We are not in a deficit. We have a balanced budget and we have an operating fund that is adequate to supply this district. In summary, operating levies do not need to be reduced issue to be in compliance with the Hancock Amendment. We are requesting to take the entire operating and capital levies as calculated and authorized by the state auditor's office. And although you may not believe it, we are not recommending the district to take the entire debt service fund levy as permitted by the state auditor's office, and we would like to give up that 10% and recommend giving up that 10 cents, I said 10%, giving up that 10% and not accepting that levy as approved by the state auditor's office. Patron comments, we are now, based on what I have just, based on this hearing, we are going to allow patron comments at this time for tax rate hearing only. This time is set aside for comments on tax rates, which will be discussed and voted on in the board meeting immediately following this hearing. Patron comments for regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting will follow this hearing. This is not the comments for the Board of Education meeting. These are the comments for tax rates only. You do not need to be signed up to comment on the tax rates, but you must comment only on the tax rates. There is also no three-minute limit on a tax rate hearing on what you want to discuss regarding tax rates. If you go off the topic of tax rates, you'll be asked to either sign up for the comments after this period, if those are full, I don't know, but that is where other comments are held. If you comment on other things, the board will have the authority to say, "Keep this to tax rate discussions." We are now open for patron comments for the tax rate hearing.
Good evening. David Lewis. I've talked here a few times, so I think you guys know who I am and what I am. My concern is always about taxes being the number one thing as a senior citizen that is on a fixed income. Taxes going up are always a challenge. You covered a lot of things, and I appreciate quickly going through that. I do have some questions about that. It is probably my ignorance, so I hope you bear with me as I ask a few of those. I'm confused by rates going up, but the taxes aren't going up. When we are going up 0.012 dollars that was allowed by the state, you're telling me that even though you're gonna have a higher rate, my taxes aren't gonna go up. Can you explain that? How does that 1,200,000s whatever get handled? How does, you know, where does it come from and where does it go?
I am not authorized at this particular point to answer your question. The board can ask that question to me in their meeting, or the board can authorize me to answer that now if they want.
I thought this was the question sections that we'd ask questions, which would indicate that there'd be responses back.
Sir, this is a comment for the tax hearing.
Okay, alright, very good. I guess I misunderstood that, so I will not put it in the form of a question, but I will make a comment related to that. Sorry about that. So, it's very confusing because you consistently have said, "No new taxes", and I understand by law you can't, but that's your, I think you're just speaking in terms of what the school district is allowed to increase. You're kind of saying, "Well, we didn't do anything, but the state did, so as long as the state did it, we can technically say we didn't do it." That's what I'm hearing you say. So it's still gonna cost me on a $200,000 tax valuation, it's still gonna cost me $2.50 more than every other one. I think that's what you're saying. And I'd really like to hear clarification because just passing the buck really doesn't cut it. So that's my comment on that. You said that you overran or we got $9 million more than what was anticipated in the budget, and I understand putting plugs in on anticipated revenue and all stuff, that makes sense. It's, you know, it's good that the plug is lower than what the amount came in did. I guess I'm trying to understand, why do you need to take 3.5 more million dollars and still take the additional maximum allowed by the state? Isn't 3.5 million dollars on top of the 5.5 million dollars enough? It seems odd because the 5.5 million dollars, as I understand it, are associated with, almost exclusively, with salary increases for teachers, and I'm for that. But if that is the case, if that 5.5 million dollars is for increases for salaries, then why do you have to increase the percentage on item number, what is it, 2 or 3, which is primarily for the teachers, the teacher fund number 2? It seemed to me that you got 5.5 million and you covered that that increase, so why do you have to increase it again, other than the fact that we can do it, the state lets us take it, so we're gonna take it? That's what it seems like to me. On the when we were talking about the, bear with me. Yeah, there's a constant comment about we are forfeiting the money as it relates to the bond issue, the no-bond increase. I mean, it's, maybe it's just the wording, but as a taxpayer, it really aggravates me because you're saying that, "Well, we're being good citizens of the tax money, good stewards of that, because we're not increasing it." No, you're doing exactly what we told you you were allowed to do. You try to pass that off as some goodness, when in fact, that's what you're being held accountable to, is not to increase that because we voted and said you couldn't increase it. So I don't get why you're trying to sugarcoat something and turn it into something more than what it is. To me, that's trying to cover up and show a good face on these numbers. And I don't, personally, I really don't appreciate that. You know, I just, to the point about, you know, we are not voluntarily forfeiting any part of our operating levy this year. You got 9 million. 5.5 was accounted for, 3 million, 3.5 wasn't. I say, "Why not?" You know, the 2.5, if you do the math, and I'm gonna say, I use the same number as what was used in the presentation, of assessed value of 200,000. 200,000 times the 0.0020s or 30s? 0.1 is like 0.002%, yeah. When you do the math on that, on $200,000 home, $2.40. Let's just say 10,000 homes. So that's 250,000, somewhere around there. You're telling me that with the 350, 3.5 million dollars of bluebird money that you got that you hadn't anticipated, that can't cover the $250,000 goodness that you're saying that you're, because we can take it, we're going to? This is the problem that we as a citizen see is that we know that you're being good stewards. We know that you're doing all that you can, and I really mean that. But it's very confusing how you can say that you need that $250,000 when the state is telling you you can keep, or by the assessed growth, you can take that 3.5 million. That doesn't add up to us sitting out here in the cheap seats. And I just really would like to know what you're gonna spend that $250,000 on that is so important that it couldn't come out of the 3.5 million. There's some discussion, and I like the slides that you put together about the debt rates and the six-year tax rate and operating expenses and all that. I was confused by the statement about the 0.55 cent that was, that was St. Charles, wasn't it? Yeah. So St. Char, I think what you said was St. Charles put the rate, the operating expense up 55 cents per 100 valuation, but they reduced the 55 cents on the capital, if I had it right. And I think what you said there is that, well, they could give that up, so because it was a no-tax increase, they just automatically added the 55 cents. And that's a, that's something, if I've got that right, and I think I do, is very frustrating to the tax people. I mean, the whole no-tax increase, well, yeah, but the fact that it was a no-tax increase last time for this most recent bill was just because the old capital fund that was supposed to be grand, sunsetted, and our rates go down, you just grabbed that money again and put it in the pipeline, so quote, "It didn't cost us anymore", but when we approved the one previously, it was supposed to be done in five years, 10 years, 20 years, whatever it was, and it never goes down. It just keeps going up because you're always finding something else. And I get we're growing. But, you know, you look at this and Wentzville's in the middle on these, on the higher end on some, and I understand the debt rate for the bill, that makes a lot of sense. I mean, I guess I challenge you, why, why can they do it for so much less? I think you would agree that Fort Zumwalt is a good school district. It's run well. They've got four or five high schools now. Now, they don't have the building costs that are going on. I get that. And we have that, and that's why it pushes us up. But when you take that and normalize that out, which you talked about there, we're still sitting, operating expenses, quite a bit more than Fort Zumwalt. That tells me that you've got higher costs. Where are those higher costs at? Why are you not running it as efficiently as what we have seen at Fort Zumwalt itself? My kids all went to s to South, very good school system. I really appreciate what they got out of that. It you know, you talk about how well we're doing, we're in the middle, but why are we never lowest costs were always the premium costs and it shows in the tax rate that we have? I'm getting close to the end. I appreciate your your uh time. So I I I guess the the thing that I I wanted to finish with was there's a document that I pulled down from the docs board that was from you, sir, to the board and to the doctor talking about the tax rate hearing. And and the thing that really stuck in for me was the 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 second to last sentence. It says, we have set all of our tax rates to the maximum permitted by law, which is our debt service rate, which relates to our no tax increase. We've set it to the maximum. Why do we have to do that when you said that it's not gonna be a tax increase? You had you've said that you got nine million dollars more than what you or excuse me, three and a half million dollars more than what you planned for because of the bluebird that came in with the higher service, uh the higher uh construction, the the rate that you got from that. Why do we have to go to the maximum? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on the tax rate hearing? Hearing, no other comments? Oh, sorry.
Okay, so my brain's a little bit mush right now with all this tax talk. I think the basic question from what you presented is that we have a three million dollar bonus this year above our budget. Yet we still wanna increase the tax rate right before a looming economic crisis in a middle income town where people, whether it's six bucks, six hundred bucks, it feels like salt being poured into the eye. So I think that that's where people's frustration is coming from. Is that it's we're talking about raising a tax rate that is it gonna raise what's coming out of our pockets? Is it gonna raise what we're paying into Saint Charles County? And then they distribute it to you like how is this? What are we actually paying you in this? Cause you said our tax rate isn't gonna go up, but our tax rate's gonna go up. Cause that's why we're here. So I'm confused. Um and like I said, this is our district's comprised of middle income families that probably struggled the last two years during the pandemic and lockdowns and losing their jobs. So they're probably not in a great position. And again, you said we do reassessments and we lower it by twenty percent. I think you said or twenty points or something, which is good. But at this point, are we are we gonna stay on that track with the way things are going up consistently? So that was that's I kinda had some questions in there. I don't know if anybody got them and could ask them. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any more comments on the tax rate hearing?
Um I guess my question is, you know, to what standard do we hold you accountable before we say no more? Is there a metric? Is it based on proficiency? Um I think Wentzville School District really needs to get their house in order before they ask parents and taxpayers for any more money. So I don't agree with even a penny more at this point. Thanks.
Any more comments? Okay, seeing no other comments. We needed a motion to adjourn the tax rate hearing and reconvene for open session at six thirty P M. All right, we're gonna do six forty five. Sorry, we're running behind.
Motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? I just have it. I'm gonna call open session in order. We're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance. If everyone please stand. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Please join us in the mission statement, learning today, leading tomorrow.
Okay, so we're gonna move to open comments here. Um as I've said before, and as we just stated with the tax hearing, this board wants to hear from its district residents and employees related to district matters. So it has set aside specific time to allow our residents and our employees to speak to the board. Um as a reminder, this is not a two way dialogue. You know, the board is looking to hear from residents as we consider, you know, items on our agenda. As you can see on the screen that's rolling above you, speakers are asked to follow the requirements of board policy four twelve. Uh we're asking you to not, if at all appropriate, uh not name employees or students. Uh we're gonna give each speaker three minutes to address the board and it is at the discretion of the board on the number of speakers and that time if if it is exceeded. That being said, I'll let it go back to President Bryce to walk us through those comments.
Okay, first up, we have Jen Olson.
Hello, someone just told me that there's a new policy where kids are only getting four bathroom breaks a semester. I think I've heard this before. I don't, I mean, that doesn't seem realistic to me.
Can you repeat that first part, sorry?
That children in the middle and high schools are only getting four bathroom breaks during class, of course, outside of their passing time du per semester, four. That's, I don't know why we would put a limit on it like that. I think it's not equal across the board between the two sexes. One suggestion I have for financial stuff, I guess, um Mr. Andrew Fine. Cut spending like on the Raptor system. I think it's kind of redundant and we don't really need it. People who are on the sex offender registry already can't come into our buildings and those are easily searched. Uh parents, anybody outside of parents, uh building officials, police officers, pre-approved visitors, stuff like that, shouldn't be coming into our buildings anyways. Um it it kind of, you know, it makes people uncomfortable. It's a third party collecting our data, collecting pictures of our IDs. Kind of strange. I don't know. It just seems like overreach. Not necessarily district, but government overreach. Um as for the wind time, I haven't really been hearing a whole lot of great stuff about it. Um mostly negative, fights, disorganization, no seats in the cafeteria, um bathrooms being unavailable. Actually, I think that happened today. A kid was going down several different hallways. He had to use the restroom. It was an immediate need and was redirected three or four times because there was people guarding the restrooms. That seems, I mean, I understand it's probably a safety thing or make sure kids aren't smoking in the bathroom or whatever. I mean, I just think it was he was upset. He was very upset and you know, person in a position of authority, you can't just plow through him and say, I have to go. So he was running around the school looking for a bathroom. Um parents are being turned away and told they can't eat lunch with their kids because there's no room. I just don't like the idea of parents being turned away, period. If I wanna come in this school because you guys have my child, I wanna come in the school. Whether it's lunchtime, you know, nap time, I don't care. It's just it's another layer of separation between us and our kids that's not going over well in the community. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Lindy Williford.
Um good evening. On September fifth, parents at Frontier Middle School received an opt out form for mental health services provided by two outside agencies. The last paragraph raised concerns among many parents as it states, students participating in these lessons, presentations will be asked to take a survey that addresses topics that include personal and protected information. When parents requested the surveys from the school, they were told the surveys could only be viewed if a parent comes to the school's office between seven A M. and three thirty P M. When further pressed as to why the surveys could not be provided to parents, we were told it was because the district did not own them. This raises many questions and concerns. If the district does not own the surveys, what will the providers who administer the surveys be doing with our students' personal and protected information? Do the surveys violate P P R A? What are the credentials of the mental health providers who will be doing the presentations and administering the personal and protected surveys? The surveys contain mental health diagnostic questions. What credentials do these agencies have to diagnose our children? Why is parental permission not required for our children to receive mental health services? An opt out is not parental permission. An opt in is more appropriate in this situation. I have addressed this board previously on sensitive topics such as sex education. When the district is speaking to our children about personal and private information, health or mental health, parental permission should be required. Especially if you're bringing in an outside agency that we know nothing about. Further, it's been determined that our former superintendent is on Compass's health board and our former assistant superintendent is on Chad's board. This appears to be a conflict of interest and definitely not good optics in this situation. I am not opposed to mental health services for our children, but this was not handled appropriately. Full transparency and respect for parental rights and permissions are necessary if the district is to provide any health services to our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, David Lewis.
Hope you guys are having a good night. It's quite interesting seeing this process. Uh just a couple of quick comments. The the whole tax discussion and I I know I've talked about it before and and I wanted to bring it just to a different point. There's always gonna be taxing, I mean, cost increases. We're all dealing with it. I can't imagine what the cost is gonna be next year with inflation that is by, you know, eight point three percent and stuff like that. I mean, it's it's scary to think about what it's it's gonna cost. I guess I'd like to know that you're looking at not just, we've always done it this way, we're gonna keep doing it this way. And that you're looking at, what do we do different and and what do we do radically different? As an example, at my home, my electrical bill was three to four hundred dollars a month. I put solar panels up. Paid them off and now my solar, my electrical cost is zero. What are we doing to dramatically change our cost structure? We just can't keep going the same way. The other point I'd like to bring up on the other side of the taxes, and I I mentioned it a little bit earlier, but you you know, our community is aging and I gotta tell you, the cost of taxes are just killing me and I know it's killing our seniors. There's gotta be some way to put some sort of cap on the seniors so they can afford to stay in their homes. I mean, my my you do the calculation and it's, you know, it's 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 tremendous and it's just gonna keep going up. We all know that. I I is there a way to look at that and is if so, how? One of the things I give as an example, and you know, you just can't always come up and complain about something, but I looked at at it wasn't this month, but the previous month, at some of the expenses that came through. We we paid for courtyard by Marriott in Columbia for the wrestling. All makes sense to me. Except we we signed a contract for a hundred and forty four dollars a night. Government rates and the school rates that I know that we can get are ninety six dollars a night. Why on earth would we have signed a contract for a hundred and forty four when the government rates are ninety six? I travel all over the country and use government rates and there's no reason that we can as well. I'm I'm baffled by that. Maybe I'm off, but it it's just I I don't understand that cost. Finally, real quick, um the the there's a survey I looked at from twenty twelve versus twenty twenty, the the parent survey as I've been digging in a little bit. All the numbers that we wanna see from the parents going up are are not all. You don't use absolutes. Majority of them are going down. The the numbers that are that are we want to be going down or going up. When you look at that from twenty twelve to twenty twenty one, there's a huge issue and this is what the citizens of the the taxpayers are complaining about. How are we addressing that? I'm out of time, so I won't get to the rest of it. Thank you.
That will end public comment. Thank you. We're moving on to superintendent comments. Danielle, you want to take it from here?
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me out there? Okay, awesome. Alright, so Bren's brought up our presentation, so I'm just going to walk you through quickly. Um, some of the things that have been happening in the district since the last time that we all met. So we've been clipping along at our, our hundred day, um, uh, checklist here and it's been a lot of fun to be able to be in our schools with our students, with our families and our staff since we were able to start school. And so I know I put a shameless plug out there every month, but if you want to follow along, I'm trying to put things out on Twitter every day. So if you want to follow along with where we are in the district or the great things happening in real time, at Dr. Tormola WSD. And so since last time we met, we've gone to many different schools and we've, uh, had some of the house sortings at Stone Creek and Green Tree and the excitement with the kiddos as they become part of their school community has been contagious and uplifting. I also got to take my own family to the Boone Trail Back to School picnic and that was lots of fun. Um, I, one of the, the, the very first athletic event that I've attended was the Timberland Varsity Soccer Home Opener and this was a personal event for me as well. Our new head varsity coach, Coach Jacobson, was actually one of my former students many, many years ago. And so I taught him in fourth grade and sixth grade and to be able to cheer him on at his very first varsity game was very special. We're back at it, right? Uh, so Friday Night Lights or Thursday Night Light, Lights when you have, uh, uh, official shortage. Um, it's lots of fun to be able to be with our students and, um, cheer on our teams. And then just recently, uh, Timberland also held their first annual, uh, marching percussion competition for sixteen area school districts and that was a great event for all of our marching band students. And I've been started, I've started our learning walks with all of our schools and our cabinet members are joining in on that as well. And we're walking the buildings with our principals and our leadership teams, really looking for engagement and learning. And what I can tell you is when I'm getting into the schools, kids are learning. They are engaged. They're in their classrooms. Our schools are safe. Our students are, are excited to be there. And I cannot tell you how thrilled I've been to be able to get into the classrooms. It literally is the very best part of my day, every day that I'm able to get out into our schools with our kids. And they're just amazing. Lots of fun and great, um, exciting events at our schools. We also have about thirty new administrators and so one of the things that we're implementing this year is our new administrative support meeting. And so they'll meet approximately every month after school where we bring them together and really give them, um, support and resources in a timely way, in a timely way to, uh, make sure that they're able to, uh, do their job as effectively as they can. So I was able to attend Patriot Day at Crossroads Elementary and I know some of our board members were able to get out to some of the other Patriots days, um, held throughout the district over the last week. And it was a great show of first responders, um, from our Wentzville Firefighter Association, our Lake St. Louis, our St. Charles County K-9, our O'Fallon, um, and Wentzville Police Departments. So many great responders, um, they had brought in helicopters. And in this picture, Tank was our K-9 dog who simply stole the show. And if he ever needs a, a home to come to, he is certainly welcome at mine. Super cute. And then just this week, we started fifth grade camp and so that will continue on through mid-October, I think, uh, October eleventh, where all of our fifth graders get to have two days back-to-back of a day camp at Quail Ridge and Bravo Parks. And they do a wide variety of outdoor activities. So I got to dissect owl pellets yesterday. Didn't know that was going to happen, so that was lots of fun. Um, one of the things that we have been, um, doing too is just trying to make sure that we're addressing the needs that do come up as we're now back into school. And one of the issues that was brought to my attention, um, shortly after the first week of school was the traffic issue at Frontier Middle. And so after observing dismissal or arrival, um, and drop-off procedures and, um, meeting with the school personnel, we pulled together a team, a collaborative meeting with MODOT officials, St. Charles County Roads and Traffic, um, O'Fallon, uh, Public Works, uh, O'Fallon, uh, Police Department, and they brought in their, um, uh, traffic supervisors and we all sat around the table together with our district and school administration, our engineers, and we really talked about what are some short-term and long-term goals or possible solutions that we could put in place to help address, um, the traffic issues at Frontier. And so, short-term, uh, the O'Fallon Police Department is helping us with some additional coverage for directing traffic. And some of the long-term goals, um, we are going to complete a traffic study which will then help guide us on, um, if a traffic light is needed and a potential reconfiguration of our entrance or our parking lot to help, help with traffic flow. So some of those, as you can imagine, a traffic study, a traffic light or reconfiguring the entrance or parking lot, those are longer-term solutions which probably will most likely happen either late spring or over the summer. But we are moving in those directions. Um, and it was a great experience to really have that many people coming together around an issue and everybody was there to help support. So, um, we feel good that we're going to be able to move in a positive direction. I just want to remind everybody that at the last board meeting, the Board of Education voted to start an electronic signup process for public comments. This will go into place next month for our October twentieth board meeting. It will go live twenty-four hours in advance. You'll be able to find it on the district website under the About tab and then under Board of Education. And then it will close thirty minutes before open session. If individuals do not have access to a device to connect to be able to do this, they certainly can come to the district's administrative center or wherever the open session will be held, there will be a device an hour ahead of time where people can also sign up on-site. So, in other news, um, I just wanted to help clarify some things that I know I saw on social media and I know that it's been kind of swirling out in the public. So, a new law, section five seventy-three dot five-five-zero of the revised statutes of Missouri, it recently went into effect, um, late in August. And it does make, make it a crime to provide explicit sexual material to students through pictorial representation. And so for that, for us, the district began a process over the summer of really reviewing all library materials to ensure compliance with this new statute. And so district staff members, including our librarians, were tasked with reviewing the materials in their respective buildings and identifying any that could potentially be in violation of the new statute. And so the district administrative team is currently reviewing the materials identified for review to ensure compliance with the new statute. And we're working diligently to complete this review as quickly as possible. If any of the materials are determined to be in violation of the statute, then those materials will be weeded from the library collections in accordance with district regulations. And then the next thing that I'd like to talk about too is transportation. So as long as I'm addressing the things that, um, our district is, is, is working with right now, our transportation department, I have to say, uh, kudos to them. They have the team there, truly is wonderful and they have been working. Over time, they're jumping in to fill in wherever it's needed. Anyone with a CDL is driving routes. Um, and they are pulling together as much as they can to help support the needs of the district. And I have to say thank you to all of our parents for their patience as we've continued to work through the issues at the first weeks of school as we balance and finalize our bus routes. But staffing shortages are real. And it's been difficult to navigate this year. And so we do know and appreciate that, um, everybody who has been able to jump in at transportation and provide support. And we know that there have been concerns and we appreciate everyone who's reached out to us. And I do want to assure everyone that any concern that has been brought to our attention has been investigated and followed up with the transportation department and they really have been adjusting and, uh, making, uh, changes as quickly as possible to meet the needs of our students. And district administration is working behind the scenes to create scenarios to help attract and retain additional drivers for our bus routes. And we hope to be able to share those ideas with the public very soon. Which brings me to the next slide, which is, we are hiring. And so we have critical shortages in various areas. We need bus drivers. We need bus monitors. Instructional assistants, custodians, our child nutrition team that works with our cafeterias to feed our kiddos each and every day. Our Chautauqua team that helps with before and after care and substitutes. If anyone is interested, this little QR code will take them straight to the website and we will get you an interview. So we are, um, looking for great people to join our team to help support our students and our community. And, um, we look forward to finding great candidates. And so with that, that's my update.
Okay, thank you. Next up, consent agenda. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Sorry, I forgot to mention, Betsy Bates will be joining us virtually, so she'll be voting. All those opposed? Nay. I just have it. Okay, next up, the live streaming update.
I just wanted to give a quick update to everyone. Last month, when we had this discussion, Vice President Goodson asked if we could start checking into other options, uh, as a backup for live streaming. And so I just wanted to kind of check in to let you know where we are with that. And so we have started reviewing other potential vendors. There's about eight or ten on this list that we're looking at. Um, and while we were going through this process, Board Docs, which is the, um, platform that we use for our board meetings, actually reached out to us and they're going to be upgrading their system. And so we were selected to be a part of a pilot. And as we're starting to dig into the upgraded features that we're going to have access to live streaming capabilities, looks like it's one of the areas that Board Docs may be able to provide for us. And so we're going to need a little more time. We'd like to thoroughly investigate that option in conjunction with the other companies that we're looking at. So we're probably going to need a couple of months before we have a true option for another live streaming alternative. But in the meantime, um, our team met and one of the administrative, um, recommendations that we are going to move forward with is with YouTube, our district, um, our district YouTube channel that we have right now, we house everything for the district on there. And so one of the concerns that, um, prompted this conversation is if there are potential, um, violations or allegations of violations for, against the community standards on YouTube, the district can have sanctions, which could be that we're temporarily locked out or we lose our channel or different things like that. And so to be able to just make sure that we are able to ensure that our channel is always there for educational purposes with, um, sharing information out to our community, working within the district, things like that. We are going to create our, the, the Board of Education's own YouTube channel where we will house all of our board meetings. And so we, it will take us a little bit of time to get that set up and then to be able to, um, uh, download and migrate over all of the current and past board meetings, the recordings, um, so that we have them all housed in one place for the board. So that way it's there if there ever would be any type of, um, sanction or anything like that, it would not then impact the district. Um, we would be able to navigate that a little bit easier as well. So we're going to plan on moving forward in that direction. Uh, it'll take us a little time to get that set up and then we will come back to you when we have more information about the Board Doc upgrade um, and what that process could potentially entail to have a potential other platform for live streaming of board, future board meetings. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Okay, thank you.
Alrighty, thank you. Next up, new business. We need a motion to approve the proposed tax rates as presented.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'm going to open it up for discussion and judging by the CPA sports coat Jason's wearing. I'm going to go with these guys some comments.
I won't use cuss words on live stream. Um, so Rick, I think the public had some questions and comments. I think it would be, you know, prudent or appropriate for you to kind of respond to those. Um, I think there's some relevant consideration and clarification around, um, the increase that does exist and the impact it would have uh, to those evaluation. More clarification around the nine million verse three and a half, verse five and a half. Um, and the language we use about forfeiting money on the debt service. I think we're a couple of those.
Certainly, I wrote down, uh, the questions that were asked and I will be, uh, more than happy at this time to, uh, to, to respond to them. As far as why don't we, uh, reduce our tax rate, uh, yes, we budgeted five and a half million dollars, uh, in assessed value increase. And yes, we got a nine million dollar assessed value increase. So it was a very, very valid question we had. What do we do with that other three and a half million because we didn't budget it? First of all, we budget conservatively so that we can make budget in this district. One thing that I did when I got here is I said, I will always have a balanced budget. We will live within that balanced budget and we are not going to stretch that budget. So there are things that we did not put in that budget. The teachers are not getting the pay that the teachers need. A lot of people in this district are not getting paid what other districts are getting paid. Did I put that in the budget? No, because I didn't, I didn't want to put us over budget and I didn't put that three and a half million dollars plus what we need for the teachers to get. Timberland's roof for the auditorium is falling in. We got two HVAC systems in our buildings that are collapsing, that we don't know what to do with. We need more HVAC help. And, and really we need about a million dollars worth of maintenance a year on those HVAC units that, that we're not doing. I could go on forever on items that were not in the budget because we did not know where the assessed values are. I can tell you that when the assessed values go up, our taxpayers voted on the tax rate that we have to use that tax rate to the best of our ability and not decrease it just because I determine what a budget should be. When the dollars are here and the tax money comes in, our voters voted for that tax increase and I think we should use that money to stop a failing roof that leaks when it rains in Timberland's auditorium. That is what we're doing with the other three and a half million dollars a, and I really do want to get our teachers at, at a better pay increase. They are well below a lot of other districts. And yes, there are places we need to spend that. And yes, this gives us that ability. Uh, another thing is if we give that up, we don't have it for next year to give to the teachers in their pay. Well, this is something that needs to continue. If we give up that rate this year, we give it up permanently and we don't, we really can't do that. Also, i- if the assessed values are going up that high, I can tell you the bills and, and the consumer price index on our bills are going to go up that high too. And we're going to need that extra money as price increases come up on diesel, gasoline and all the other things that are going to happen, uh, in this, uh, in this fiscal year. As far as the fifty-five cents for St. Charles, uh, they had to do that. You can't just decide on your own if you're going to move your levies around. The levies can only be moved around by voters in the district. So the voters there made that decision, uh, to move that fifty-five cents. And again, we can't control them, but that's nothing that we'll, we would ever do and we can't do because that's a voter-approved item. As far as what is our metrics for, for what taxes we charge, we charge what the voters told us to do. Do we decrease our taxes when the voters told us to use this for safety, for salaries, for all the things that we do in our district, for roofs, for heating and air conditioning? No, we, we don't decrease the taxes. We use that money to the best of our ability and when we have the ability to use that, we use that to the best of our ability, but still decide, no matter what happens, we're going to balance our budget, even if we can't afford to do all the things that we need to do. So why not cut taxes? That was a question. Because the voter approved the taxes. The voters told us to use that money. Uh, another thing, what happens to the, the, the twelve one-hundredths of one penny? That is one, one, uh, one ten-thousandth of one percent of our budget. It is not two hundred fifty thousand. That whole, uh, uh, twelve one-hundredths of, of a penny comes out for the entire district to thirty-three thousand dollars, not two hundred fifty thousand or two hundred thousand dollars. Comes out to thirty-three thousand dollars, which is two dollars and forty cents per two hundred thousand dollars of assessed value. It's the same guideline that we use when every other year, the same guidelines we use. You say we're being unfair by going up twelve one-hundredths of- You say we're being unfair by going up twelve one-hundredths of a penny by following the state law and by following the state rules on what's allowed. It's the same rules we follow when we cut our taxes every reassessment year by over twenty cents. That's not twenty-one-hundredths of a cent, that's twenty cents. We follow those guidelines and we stick to those guidelines. If we start making a decision every year on do we take the taxes that the state and, and the voters allowed, uh then we start making a decision each year and making a decision not on what the voters voted on. And, and that's why I believe we go in this direction. And, and those are very good questions that were asked. I, I applaud those questions and you deserve answers to it. But at the same time, uh you're hearing where I am coming from, the CFO and, and decisions that, that we've made as a school district on, on, on where we're going. Very good questions and, and, and I respect those questions. I really do. And one thing I'd just like to put out there is we have a finance committee and that fi- this finance committee is open to the public and we discuss items like this. And I would very much welcome anyone in this district to attend, attend our finance committee meetings and learn more about the finances of thi- this district. And if I miss any questions, I sincerely apologize.
Does anyone else have any discussion?
I have a question. Okay, so one of the questions that was asked that I actually had myself as well, um. So where is this? I wanna make sure I understand this. This is not a tax increase. So where is the, am I interpreting this right? Hundred and thirty-eight point two million in revenue? Correct me if I'm wrong. I was just trying to, you know, sort it out in my brain. I'm not a numbers person. Um okay, essentially the question was, if it's not a tax increase, where is this revenue coming from? Who's gonna get the bill?
The hundred thirty-eight point two million is the total assessed value times the total rate. So we have a hundred thirty-eight point two million dollars coming in uh from this particular tax revenue source. That's the hundred thirty-eight point two.
Maybe I'll just layman term that the taxpayers pay them. I mean, it, the calculation that was done specific to two hundred thousand is an accurate calculation. The nine million dollars that's coming just purely from valuation, not a rate difference, is coming from taxpayers. So your home value increase, your property tax increase, total dollars.
Okay, definitely. Um so something else that I heard, I just wanna maybe interpret it. Um and I wrote it down as I was thinking. So um what I've been hearing, I think, from people is, and I, I did get lots of input from people. Um I only got one email in favor of this, um was that before we ask anymore from our taxpayers in our district, um we want to, they want to see a return on the investment of the taxes, the tax burden. We've already asked of them. Um I'm incredibly optimistic with the future of this district um based on the leadership I've seen so far from Dr. Tormola. Um but as an advocate for taxpayers, I believe that they, we need to see um a return on the investment before we ask anymore of them. Um you know, what are we doing differently? Um one of our, the people here tonight asked that, what are we doing radically differently? Um to find other sources than increasing taxes for, for the revenue? Where are we taking it? Where could we take it from instead? Um you know, just, they may not be able to be answered tonight, um or even they're just hypothetical questions, but um thought I needed to ask it.
Can I, can you mind if I respond here? I guess what, my question is, uh you know, I've, I've seen those things too, but what is the definition of return on investment? Like, do you know or is there anything that you in particular, anybody else has concerns about?
I mean, definitely we're schools, seeing our um test scores go up. I know those aren't immediate things. We're not gonna um, you know, maybe even see that in the semester. Uh you know, but just seeing a, a steady increase, doesn't have to be drastic. Um but I would consider that a return on investment, absolutely. That's the primary reason we're here. Um and I definitely don't want to see staff um to be more, um oh, I don't know how to word this. I don't want them to seek employment elsewhere because the pay rates are higher in other districts. Um that's the last thing I want. I understand the staffing shortage.
And Katie, if I can respond to that too, one of the things that I have asked for and what we will be doing this year, I've asked for a comprehensive wage analysis. Because coming in and looking at where we are with Wentzville, with our ability to pay our staff, especially our support staff and our teachers. When we talk about being competitive within the county or our neighboring districts, um most of our area districts are starting teacher salaries at forty-five thousand dollars in that ballpark. We're sitting around forty thousand dollars starting pay. So when you have a five thousand dollar discrepancy for starting pay and such a teacher shortage already, it puts us at a distinct disadvantage to have the teachers that we want to be able to, to um address the needs that we have in our class. We have amazing, amazing staff and I have been thoroughly impressed by their dedication, the quality, just it's been amazing. But I also know it's a struggle for us to continue to find people that we want to invite into our Wentzville family to meet those needs when our pay structure is significantly different than the surrounding districts. And that extends to our support staff, our bus drivers, our custodians, our child nutrition, our, like, y- you name it. And that's why I'm asking for a comprehensive wage study so we can really look at that objectively for short-term and long-term. Because we probably can't fix that overnight, right? It took us a while to get where we are. Um listening to Rick and knowing that when I've, I've toured the buildings, I've seen some of the significant maintenance needs. Our district has done a phenomenal job of staying a- ahead of the curve or meeting the need with our rapid expansion with enrollment. And the amount of buildings, I think that the, I think we built six schools in the last nine years and added one point four million square feet of additional footage with additions and things like that. But when we've done that, we haven't expanded our maintenance team. So we've added all of the square footage that needs attention, but we haven't added the staff to be able to maintain. And then talking about Rick and Timberland, I happened to be doing a wa- learning walk one day with them and it was raining and we walked into their theater and literally it was raining everywhere. And I kind of joke, I'd say it was like a full-body experience. You could hear it, you could feel it, you could smell it. I, it, it was all around us and I called Rick and I'm like, we, we have to do something about this. And so there are amazing facilities within this district and there are also facilities that because of the focus and the immediate need of being able to, needing to expand to accommodate the students, we also now have a great need of facilities that haven't gotten as much love and they need it. Um and so those are some of the areas that when we're talking about this, we absolutely will be good stewards of every dollar that we receive. We will have short-term and long-term goals to make sure that we see a return. And it, through academics, through our staff, through the services we can provide to our families and our community and to our facilities, so that they all represent the high level of quality that our community has come to expect.
Quick, quick question for you there on that, Danielle. Um can you maybe give, like, I, I know you know this, like, the, when the short-term goals, like, when we do plan to speak to some of those activities, um you know, where we can then start to measure that success? When is, I know we had that called the broader view of the major goals, but when are the mu- you know, the level down? You know, when can the, you know, public expect that?
So we're working on that right now and we're hoping to have that for you very soon within the next October to November range for where we're heading in terms of our four main collaborative goals of communication, academic achievement, uh safety and security and uh climate and culture. So we're working on that right now and we hope to have that to you very soon.
Okay, and, and so maybe I wanna make a few comments. I, I think I probably received, I don't know, forty to fifty, you know, patron comments around the topic. I'd say it was split down the middle, maybe more towards supporting it uh given especially the size, so, so some context um from my perspective. Um I don't think this is an easy issue. I think that, you know, taxes in the struggling middle class is a real thing. I also think what you just described in your superintendent comments cannot be ignored. I, I don't think you put data points to that, but I've talked to enough child nutrition staff of transportation to know that the gaps in services, I'm gonna use strong language, are on the brink of collapse. Um they are, we've had staff that have joined um to then go and get more money elsewhere. We can't be competitive on subrates on transportation, for example. We aren't competitive in the scales for child nutrition. We can't compete with, you know, for-profit entities like Chick-fil-A's and other things. We can't keep up at that rate. We're boxed in with these rates and these laws and these regulations to keep revenues at a number. The expenses can't go in that, those percentages increases, which is why, you know, many did not like the fact we only gave two percent at the last year for most staff, you know, support staff, you know, instructional assistants and those. So, so that is one thing. I think, you know, when we're talking in the general obligation fund, to the, to Rick's point, those funds are used for things that, like that, that are not budgeted. The two and a, two percent is what our going-in assumption is in a given budget. And so anything above that that we wanna do in any of the negotiation discussions has to come from somewhere. Um there's a point to be made around what happens, you know, the following year, we lose those monies in the general obligation. I think what cannot be, you, we are looked at, this body is looked at and the administration in conjunction with, we set the tone and morale um around the district. And so to the extent that we're nervous around a zero point zero two percent increase when those things are happening says something as well. So that's the counter, I think, you know, that we all have to consider to the consideration of the middle tax, our middle-class impacts and the, you know, economic environment that we find ourselves in. I'm not saying I have solutions. Um I'm not saying, you know, that this isn't easy. I think those are also some points that, you know, we're looked at and considerate of those things. I think the fact that we did show a balanced budget this year is something to be said. Cause that, if, I don't know, if, you know, the preliminary views of that was not balanced. So that came with a cost, that came with an ask from the buildings, it came from an ask from these departments that sit up here to not increase costs or not add more costs in the next year to make that balanced budget to show in one way uh that we are good stewards of the monies that we have. So I just, I think some of those points are relevant. I s- you know, Danielle, I assume you support Rick's views on these things. Obviously, we wouldn't be here um with this discussion if you did not. I, I think you've done a marvelous job since joining the district. I think everybody's feedback would say that you've added a breath of fresh air to a tired public education environment, not just in Wentzville, but in generally speaking. And so, you know, I'm gonna trust you with, you know, with regards to the way you view these things. I wanna give you that leeway to do that and I'll say that publicly because I think there's clear evidence of where that transition has happened since July first. Um and we should give you that buffer to operate and fix these things that we see.
Thank you. I just have one more question. So after this request, um when would the next time there would be a request for increase of taxes or something of this nature?
Well, the only increase in taxes that would be requested would be going to the voters. Uh we, I have no plans at this particular point and I don't know if anybody in the board has plans. I can't speak for anybody that we would be increasing taxes and going to the voters to do that.
What about, so this is just to level out the year that there's not an assessment and there's a year that there is an assessment, correct?
Well, it's just that when there's an assessment, the assessed values of the homes go up more, which results in more taxes. It's only because the ass- it's not, didn't have anything to the rates. At that particular point, it has to do with the values of the homes go up during the reass- reassessment years, which results in more value against that tax rate coming into the district.
So in two years, will we be here again doing the same thing, just, you know, with another?
My, my views of that, like, it's pretty imminent. Correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, and this is just my layman's terms, try to do that. Yeah, on an assessment year, you'll likely see taxes go down on a, on a per-dollar basis, that five dollars and whatever. So last year, the twenty cent decline was in an assessment year. And then in a non-assessment year, you'll typically see these small incremental increases, you know, and to, to that point, there's obviously, depending on CPI, there's limits with the Hancock Rule on how far that can go up and limit some of those things. And that's why you pre- you pretty can hit the Hancock Amendment and then see, you know, that increase then come in the rate side to kind of augment the um increase you see, or need, I should say.
And every September, we will have this hearing. So, so every year, we'll have a tax rate hearing and we will set the tax rate with um board approval.
J- Jason, you are one hundred percent correct. Every other year, we'll see a hundredth of a percent, sometimes maybe even up to a penny at the most. But in the reassessment years, you'll normally see in the neighborhood of a twenty cent drop i- in, in the rates. And uh that is because the, the rates really didn't drop. What it is, is, is we're just limited to how much more we can charge in taxes. And uh we can't charge more in taxes than is going up on the consumer price index. And as Jason stated, it all, it all buries back into that Hancock Amendment, which is one of the laws in the state of Missouri.
This is a, this is a minor point, but I, I actually was listening to David talk there on the hotel rates. I do, I would like, this is really random and off-topic, but he brought it up and so I think it's worth it. I would like to look at that, you know, specifically, are we not using, I've seen in us-approved contracts that are doing that. So that delineation between ninety-six and one forty-four seemed extreme. I think we should look at that one. I, I think that this, you know, Katie's right. I mean, the return on investment matters. The, the results of the district matter and there's clear DSE guideline, or there's clear DSE uh metrics and things that any reader can pick up to then measure success. Um I don't want to get into the past. Some of it, I was here for some, it's not in terms of why we are where we're at. Um but that is why I was an advocate of setting goals at a top level and then getting metrics to then define that success. Because I will tell you, if, if we're not meeting those metrics that we then define, I think this is a very relevant conversation around taxes and what we charge for that. Because my goal is to have the ammunition for that being very clear on what the expectation the board has set and those goals and objectives that need to be met in order to do that. So I think that, that is certainly, you know, what I'm looking forward to.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, now that we all have a college credit towards financing, we're gonna take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
I just have it. Moving on to challenged materials.
Yeah, I'd like to actually start with a motion on this. I actually move that flamer not be retained due to the potential that doing so would be a violation of section five seven three dot five five oh of the RSMO.
I second that motion. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, maybe I'll make a, just a couple of points. Um I think um as I understand it and um Danielle, please correct me if I'm wrong with some of the statements. Um at the time that the committee had made this recommendation that sits before the board and, and for those listening, the, the committee recommended to keep the book. Um I think this law had not been signed into place. Um I don't think it would be in this board's best interest, nor was the direction given to assess that book with that committee underneath this statute. Um and so I think that is something we have to consider as it relates to this. Um you know, to retain this di- you know, this book could put district staff at risk of violating this new law, um which is a criminal offense. And I think we have to, you know, consider that, not just for ourselves, um but our staff and the committee members that reviewed the book. And so I, that, for that reason, I support uh the motion that I'm in.
Go ahead.
Uh I just wanted to take a moment to thank the people that participated on the committee because they put obviously much time um and, you know, invested a lot into providing us with a very comprehensive assessment of their opinions and, and of the book uh as it was originally challenged. So I just wanted to, to thank them for that.
Okay, if, any more discussion? Okay, Matthew, I'm gonna call for a roll call vote on this, please.
Director Lizaak?
Can you reread the motion?
Yes. Motion is that flamer not be retained due to the potential that doing so would be a violation of section five seven three five five zero.
Aye.
Director Stoli?
Aye.
Director Scott?
Nay.
Vice President Goodson?
Aye.
President Bryce?
Aye.
Secretary Abbott?
Aye.
Director Bates? Motion carries?
Okay, with that, we need a motion to adjourn open session and go into closed session for the purpose of personnel and negotiations.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
I'm sorry, who was that second?
All those in favor, say aye. Oppose? Alright, thanks.